Okay, even now, we don't have the call, and let's start the meeting. And, uh... Oh, excellent. Now, now we have a call.
Call was achieved.
Very good, yes. Uh, the third item in the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Uh, any, uh, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Okay, uh, being, uh, properly second, uh, is the minutes being approved?
Got it.
Okay. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, uh... Any question? No, okay. Is approved by unanimous?
Opposition.
We're going to discuss now the policy calendar. We have three items. Uh, number one is the revised procedure for handling student complaints about faculty conduct in academic setting. Number two, Baruch College, uh, Master in Mental Health Counseling. And number three, LaGuardia Community College, uh, Biology. I, I'd like to call Rick now to discuss the, uh, procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll recall, several years ago, the Board adopted a policy, or procedures, rather, for handling student complaints. And the original set of procedures called for a study, uh, after a couple of years to see how that was working. We did that study and reported to this committee last June, um, and the bottom line was that it was working reasonably well, uh, that there were some areas of potential improvement. We had reached out to faculty and students, uh, for their ideas, and the report summarized, uh, what those ideas were and indicated which, uh, uh, we thought would be, uh, perhaps grounds for amending the policy. Uh, and so we've now brought, uh, an amended policy, uh, to you for consideration. The amendments are relatively modest. Uh, one has to do with the ability of department chairs to recuse themselves from investigating in situations where they feel they might have a conflict or an appearance of conflict of interest without necessarily waiting for either the student or the faculty member to suggest it. A, uh, another, uh, item which was, uh, recommended by, uh, some faculty, uh, was to create a standing requirement that only students who were in the class or in the setting in which the alleged misconduct had occurred, uh, would have standing to, uh, bring a complaint. And then the third item, um, was really to confirm, because it had actually happened on one or two occasions, uh, the ability during the course of an investigation, uh, the ability of the fact finder to grant, uh, some interim relief. Um, the policy that you have, or the version that you have in front of you is slightly different, uh, from what was distributed last week, uh, due to some, uh, comments that, uh, I had received from, uh, from trustee Philip, uh, and, uh, which I hadn't immediately acted on, but the more I thought about them, the more I thought they were, uh, good comments, uh, which was to spell out in a little more detail what the standards would be for granting interim relief and to make sure that faculty had the right of an appeal, uh, if, uh, a department chair or dean granted the interim relief. And so, uh, whereas the policy you got last week, um, had just a passing reference in paragraph D to the power to grant interim relief, uh, the policy that you have, the draft that you have in front of you today, has a new paragraph E which lays out, uh, the standard, uh, for granting interim relief. Uh, it's sort of borrowed from the legal standard for granting preliminary injunctions, uh, which, you know, legal analogies don't always work, but in this context, I thought, uh, it worked reasonably well. And, uh, and so that's the one difference from the draft you saw, uh, in the original package. And with that, I'm done, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Um, actually, I'd like to thank Rick for, uh, for working with us, particularly on that, uh, interim issue of the added information in paragraph, uh, section E, uh, which is, which is there and, uh, you know, answered the concern that we had about, about the idea of interim. Uh, um, I will say that, that the UFS, through its Academic Freedom Committee and, uh, uh, Academic Freedom Committees on campuses and so on, will continue to be, uh, you know, observant of how this whole policy plays out, uh, so that nothing that's, you know, inappropriately, uh, impinging on academic freedom takes place during it, but, uh, that seems, as far as we know, not to have happened yet, and we're, we're glad of that, so this is, this is finally...
Question? Uh, does this policy cover if a, a teacher or, well, let's say a teacher, uh, takes a side on an ethical issue instead of presenting it in a balanced way? Abortion, Israeli-Palestinian conflict? Instead of presenting pros and cons, having a discussion, you see that it's slanted in a direction?
Well, it covers it in the sense that a student could complain about that, uh, but I think that complaint would be treated as one that really falls within the realm of academic freedom. Uh, we, we rely upon our faculty, uh, to, to govern themselves with respect to how they present materials in class, um, and, um, you know, I think most faculty view their teaching obligations as, uh, embodying some sense of presenting what they consider to be the intellectually rigorous approaches to problems, um, but there's no requirement for, uh, any kind of mathematical balance, and I think an effort to impose that would be, uh, viewed pretty widely as impinging upon, uh, academic freedom.
Oh, no, I'm, uh, I'm talking about, it was clearly not balanced on the faculty's part. It does happen in some places in the country. I mean, that's a fact.
Right.
Is this, is this the situation, because that's not listed here?
It, it is, it, not, there is really no standard listed here at all, actually, for misconduct, which was part of the faculty's original objection to this. What you have here is simply a set of procedures so that students will know if they feel there has been in their minds some form of faculty misconduct, they will know how to process a complaint. The substance of what constitutes misconduct is, in a sense, left to the common law of, under this procedure.
Is that, so it's covered on the academic integrity? Is that, would that, would it be, that phrase covered? It covers these areas, whether it happened or not is a whole different discussion.
No, academic integrity generally refers to plagiarism or, or falsifying, uh, data. Um, and so, um, that has a different set of procedures. Uh, the, the, the list that you're reading from at the beginning has to do with areas that are actually covered by other policies. And, and that this, this one is simply, uh, a, a set of procedures for student complaints about faculty conduct in academic settings, which might include, in the student's view, what you've described, uh, trustee Sutton, um, but, under the facts as you've described them, they would probably, that, that complaint would probably be dismissed, uh, on the grounds that a, a, a inquiry into whether a presentation was sufficiently balanced or not would impinge upon academic freedom.
Okay, so, let me just clarify. So, let's take abortion. A teacher could come in and take either side on the abortion issue completely unbalanced, and that is acceptable and within academic freedom?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't think that's a hundred percent, uh, true across the country, and maybe we should have a subcommittee to discuss what is our real position on that.
Well, I, I think a continuing conversation on the boundaries of academic freedom would be, uh, a useful thing, um, and, indeed, I've suggested to the chancellor that perhaps next year at the Council President's Retreat, we include, uh, a program on academic freedom, and perhaps we should do one in the context, uh, of, of a board meeting or, or a separate meeting of the Board as well. But, uh, I, I think you're right, that, that views of academic freedom across the country vary. Uh, I can only give you my own, my own view of the question that you've posed to me, and, and perhaps not everybody would agree with it, um, but within the usual traditional AAUP definition, uh, of academic freedom, the content and manner of presentation of classroom material is left to the professional judgment of faculty.
Leonore?
Yeah, uh, in fact, I was going to refer to the AAUP, which the CUNY, uh, CUNY policy endorses, CUNY policy endorses the AAUP definition of academic freedom. And there's nothing in the AAUP statements, nineteen forty, nineteen fifteen, nineteen seventy, that, that, that requires or even asks a faculty member to present a balanced view. Um, what, what's required is that the, the faculty member, uh, present, uh, what is, in the faculty member's view, um, appropriate or, or validated within his or her discipline. Um, I think it's also fair to say that if a faculty member penalized a student for taking, you know, uh, an opposite point of view from the faculty member, that, that might be, if, if, if the sole reason was you didn't, you didn't pick the right, uh, you know, position that I agree with, that might be problematic. But there's really nothing in academic freedom that requires, uh, faculty members to take a balanced view, and if there was, then, you know, you can imagine really horrendous, you know, slavery, Holocaust, pro, anti, I mean, would we also be required to give balanced views of those things as well?
Well, I certainly want a faculty member being pro-slavery and not balanced. I certainly don't want that. I, you know, there's a limit to, there's a limit to what we could assume is, I mean, our job is to make sure that students learn how to deal with issues on an intelligent basis.
Right.
If giving one side of it because that's his personal side is what we think is the best in growing that student, maybe, but I'm not sure that's what we believe.
Just one more thing then for me, which, which is, hopefully, it wouldn't be from his or her personal viewpoint, but something out of the discipline, something that is appropriate to the course, uh, something that's backed up by disciplinary or theory of scholarly materials, not just, not just spouting off personal...
Is he on for a reading now?
That's a limitation that makes sense.
Mantra?
Two things. First of all, I'd like to thank Vice Senator Schaefer for the discussions we've had on this policy and the changes that resulted in not the entirely appropriate, uh, changes, and I certainly thank you for that. Uh, in terms of trustee Sutton's comments, um, I myself, um, I teach biochemistry, I'm a chemist, and I, in the course of teaching biochemistry, I touch heavily on the theory of evolution, which I wouldn't consider a theory, but a fact, the fact of evolution. Now, I'm highly aware, of course, in my classes, that people of certain religious backgrounds have a different view of these things, and, but nonetheless, there's no obligation for me as a chemist or as a biochemist to take a religious point of view which exists in society, and I'm aware of that, and te, and provide that as a balanced view in terms of teaching. I'm not, I'm not obliged to that, in fact, to do that. In fact, it would be a violation of what I'm supposed to be doing. Um, I'm not supposed to provide a balanced view. There are other places in society that provide different views, and this is a free country, and those places exist, and they have a right to exist. Uh, what I teach in terms of the biochemistry has to derive from this, from the science itself and from the evidence that's available. Uh, and that's not disrespectful, disrespectful of other people's views, and I, certainly when students bring this up, and it happens rarely, but it does, uh, that's, that's the stance I take. But in terms of your concerns about this being a problem in CUNY, I don't think it's a problem in CUNY. Uh, it may be a problem elsewhere, uh, but in this university, it's not a problem, probably mainly because of the kind of academic structure that we have. We're based on departments with elected chairs, um, and in these departments, there's a consensus on what's appropriate and not appropriate in terms of teaching standards. And, and there's a, there's an extensive discussion, at least in healthy departments, of what is appropriate and what's not appropriate in this kind of situation. And as a result of that, you don't get the kind of situation, at least not very often, and not, not at all as far as I'm aware, but the kind of situation that you're concerned about. These situations do come out in other places that don't have the kind of mature faculty governance structure that we have, which tries to inhibit, really inhibits, uh, the kind of, uh, point of view that, you know, where you're worried about somebody who teaches slavery as a good thing or, or something like that. That, that, that kind of thing does not happen in this university, and I don't think it will, as long as we keep the kind of structures that we have.
Is there any other opinion? If not, then we are going to turn the meeting to discuss the two, uh, item, the Baruch College. We have to vote this one, or we're going all together?
I've got to leave, sir.
We do separate?
I would vote each one.
I see, okay. So, any move to, uh, accept the, uh, this, uh, Rick presentation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I see. Somebody voting in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is carried. Now, we're going to turn to, uh, Lexa to discuss the Baruch and the LaGuardia, uh, issues there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, first is the Baruch College MA in Mental Health Counseling. Uh, this is a program that prepares graduates for licensure for as mental health counselors in the state of New York. There are several similar, uh, programs already in other senior colleges that have already been approved by the Board, and they follow the introduction of the licensing requirement by the SED in two thousand and two. And in that, in addition to the thirteen generalist content areas mandated by the state, the curriculum must include an additional health counseling focus, equipping graduates with the knowledge and skills necessary to counsel patients with comorbid somatic conditions such as diabetes, body image disturbances, substance abuse, cancer, and so on. The curricula include content clearly defining the scope of practice for limitation of expertise, situations requiring collaboration with other professionals, and work as part of an interdisciplinary treatment team. The state law stipulates that counselors seek consultation and evaluation from an MD for any treatment of an individual with a serious mental illness such as schizophrenia, major depressive disorder, or panic disorder. The program will seek accreditation by the national accrediting body, which is CACREP, as soon as it becomes eligible.
The, the only, uh, comment that I have about this, uh, piece is that, when they say the, any MD should be a psychiatrist, MD psychiatrist, because otherwise, you know, a MD, a general practitioner would not have the necessary knowledge to really, uh, work on that area. It has to be MD psychiatrist. Any, uh, any other comment? None? Okay, we, uh... Any move to approve this?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
We, uh... Is all approved by unanimous?
Aye.
All in favor, yes.
All in favor, I see. Any opposed? Okay, it's carried.
Okay. Next one. Uh, the next one is LaGuardia Community College, an AS in Biology. This program provides students with the first two years of science education, preparing them for seamless transfer to a four-year program in biology and potentially for advanced studies in biomedical research or medicine. All students will be introduced to hypothesis-driven research. They will complete a supervised laboratory internship, perform a small research project for their capstone course, and prepare oral presentations that will be deposited in their electronic portfolios. The college already has sufficient faculty expertise in the field, and no new faculty would be required. The program is supported by a Title V grant from the Department of Education to enhance the quality of STEM, meaning, uh, science, technology, engineering, and math, education at Hispanic-serving institutions. The grant will allow for renovation and expansion of existing laboratory facilities.
Motion to approve?
I'd like to strongly speak in favor of this, uh, item. It's entirely appropriate that LaGuardia have, uh, offer the AS in Biology, and well articulated with the senior colleges.
We're, we're always glad to see community colleges, uh, supporting the sciences, um, and laboratory sciences, and I also wanted to mention something that I bring up all the time, which is articulation. I see in this, in this, uh, proposal, um, there is an articulation agreement now, I guess, between, uh, LaGuardia and New York. Do you know, are there any plans to develop further articulations?
Yes. I don't know the details, but I know there are.
Yes, they're all...
This is the chief academic officer of LaGuardia over here.
Yes, they're all...
Peter.
etc.
Et cetera, okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Okay, the, uh, information for item, uh, Lexa.
Okay. Yeah, I just have a couple of information items, um, two actually, that I want to, uh, mention to the panel committee. The first one has to do with the new community college, just to give you an update on the plans for the new community college. Um, we are planning, we are on a very tight schedule at the current time, assuming the schedule holds. We're planning to open the new community college in the fall of two thousand and twelve in Manhattan. Um, so we are now currently looking for a founding president for the new community college, and we are also looking for the founding faculty, um, to start with, just a group of eight faculty, who will help us build, um, the, uh, important parts of the, uh, first parts of the new community college, the curriculum particularly. All of that is going very well, we're on track, and, um, so, uh, we will keep you informed as to what further developments there may be. The second item I wanted to give you some information about is our current, uh, enrollment situation, or application situation, admission situation for fall two thousand and ten, this coming fall. Um, I've given this committee periodic updates on what's happening, and things are changing yet again. So, um, what we have done, um, which I believe I already told you, is to, we already have an enrollment target for each college for this fall, and those targets, if you combine them, if you put them together, would result in about a three percent growth for CUNY next fall, all together as a system. This is, um, we feel, sort of, the maximum that we can grow next fall and maintain quality, uh, because it, it comes following on last fall, an eight percent growth, which is extremely large, so we want to try to not have that two years in a row. We are monitoring applications very carefully. Applications, we have had more applications for this coming fall, uh, than we did at the same time last year, again, which was more than the year before. And looking at the current rate of applications, we believe that we will have enough applications to completely fill the targets of all of the colleges by around May first. This is a huge change from, in, just two years ago at CUNY, when there were a number of colleges that kept accepting applications throughout the summer.
What do you mean by targets? What are those targets?
How many students we want the colleges to have next fall, and then we...
Was that an increase from last year, a decrease?
Yes, it's an increase.
What percentage?
To altogether, if we looked at them all together, they would average out to three percent.
So this year, you want to limit the increase to three, the target is to limit the increase to three percent?
Right, and we will reach enough applications for that three percent growth by around May first. So, um, what we will do is, we're watching this very carefully. We don't want to take applications if students have no hope of being admitted for the fall, so we're going to watch it very carefully. And at the point that we cut off applications, we're going to, uh, do one or both of two things. One is to open spring two thousand and eleven applications, and the other is to create a waiting list, which is for fall two thousand and ten. This is not something that CUNY has done previously. Um, and then, if some colleges find out they still have some room for fall, they can take from the waiting list. Um, we also, another situation that we are watching carefully, and this has to do with board policy. Board policy is, as I'm sure you know, that no student can enroll in a senior college at CUNY unless they have no remedial needs. I mean, leaving aside SEEK, the SEEK program and all of that, but they have to satisfy all remedial needs by September in order to enroll in a senior college. But what happens is some students are admitted to the senior colleges who do have some remedial need, and, um, they are then told during the summer, you must, you must, um, deal with your remedial needs, you must, um, uh, finish your remediation at the summer in order to enroll in the fall. Sometimes, they don't do that. In fact, it's not just sometimes, it's more than sometimes. But we have, we certainly have, we have students, um, several hundred students usually, who either don't go to summer classes to do their remediation, or they take them and they don't pass them. And so then they come to the end of the summer, they still need remediation, they can't go to the senior college, they were accepted at. In past years, we would just send them to a community college.
This year, they'll be closed down?
Exactly. Okay, so, we're working on trying to make sure there will be places for those students, and, um, that, we're working on that right now.
You mean, you're going to leave a reserve in the community college level because you know there's going to be some of that nature?
Something like that, yes. And what we want to do going forward is we want to examine this whole conditional admit policy, that admits students conditionally, to see if there might be a better way to do this. Most colleges, in fact, we don't know of any other colleges that do what CUNY does this way, so we want to, we want to look at this in the future.
Excuse me. Uh, you said for the, those students they have until the end of summer to complete or to pass their exam, but is that leave enough time for the people on that, who will be on that waiting list to register for the summer, just in case those students don't make it and they, you have room available, will, will there be enough time for those on the waiting list to proceed?
This is what we have to find a way to do, because we want to make sure that if a student has been accepted to CUNY, that they, there is a place for them. So we're working on that now.
Yeah, I, I think you answered my question, but when you said targets of three percent, that includes all the colleges.
Yeah, that's...
That's senior, but senior and community colleges are included in that.
Some are zero.
Yeah.
Some are zero.
Right.
Some are...
So that May first could also be a closing date for the community colleges as well?
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No, no, no.
No?
I'd like to ask some questions.
Oh, I see, okay, go ahead.
So, just tell me about remediation. How do, from the SAT score, you know if they need remediation? Not really.
Um, there are several ways that a student can show us that they do not need remediation. One is by SAT scores. Uh, another is by, um, the, uh, region scores, the, you know, the New York State region scores? Uh, and another way is we have exams that a student can take. The math one, for example, is called the compass exam. They can take that, and by any of those three ways, they can show us they don't need remediation.
So, a student is assumed to need remediation when they start? No, you must require him to get...
Well, the, the, if, many of them have SAT scores that show us they don't need remediation, and so, or region scores, and they come in that way, they apply that way, they already have it.
So, somebody applied to Hunter and got accepted. Tell me how you would think they need remediation, because they got a sixty-six on their English regions?
If they got, if they got, um, I know the math better, if they got a sixty-six on their math region, that would not be good enough. And if their SAT, I don't know what the value is, but if they had a low math SAT, then...
But they got into Hunter, the total SAT was adequate.
Right.
Combination of the low regent and not-so-high math score.
Yeah, this is because the admissions criteria for the colleges are a combined SAT score, across verbal and math.
Right, so your math, you could have gotten eight hundred in your verbal, but you only got five hundred in your math, and you still made Hunter. So then you'd go to his, uh, regions. If he got a ninety-nine on the regions, he still wouldn't require it, even with a five hundred.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
But it doesn't usually work that way.
Not usually.
Okay, so...
Any, oh, any other comment?
Okay, so you cross, you're, this is a new, new terrain.
Well, it's a new look at old terrain.
Okay.
Any other comment? If not now, do I have my... Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
So moved. Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
So, we have to talk.
Sure. Okay. Happy to...
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for the setup.